Good evening, it is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. In this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council, it's now called the Order. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding at Sandpoint Community Hall 204 South First Avenue in Sandpoint, Idaho. Also present, our council member Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, John Darling, Kate McAllister, and Andy Grove, Councilman Joel Spiro's. So now we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, will everyone? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The staff have it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have one tonight. It is, we're moving into construction season with the nicest weather. With the nicer weather, and one of our first construction projects will be kicking off this year is our sidewalk project on Pine Street. To that end, we have an open house presentation tomorrow from 5:30 to could be as late as 7:30, will probably be done earlier. At the Barrow County Sportsman Indoor Range, so Pine Street Park, we'll have it there. If it's a really nice day, we may set up outside. But in case it's not, we set up for inside the range. Invitations have gone out to the neighbors along that stretch where we'll be doing the construction. But it's an opportunity to come in and ask questions, understand traffic impacts, and anything else about the project. Did I miss anything? So tomorrow evening.
Thank you for that. And Director.
Yes, I would like to, excited to share that along with your proclamation of our trees today or the, tonight, we will be, update on our urban forest plan. That we're in the process of revisiting with a well-known consultant in the area, Jim Flock. He was one time a forest verse for the city of Spokane and actually tours around the nation is quite well thought of. As with the, yep, our other plants that we have going, this, this will take us into the future and it's, and especially for with trees, because once you plant them, they stay for a long time. So what we really want to do is go in and revisit where we're at right now. It's a great opportunity with all our other plans to go forward. We're also going to write better define the role of our awesome tree committee. We have a lot of expertise on our tree committee. And not that they've been flattering, they've done a lot of hard work, but to really to better define and communicate expectations that they have and that we have and really what the role is going forward, so it's efficiencies. To that end, I'll be meeting next week with the Idaho Department of Land Arborist, which is a free resource for the cities, named Garth. And then Jim, our consultant in Spokane, and then Ben, who's in charge of Avista in Spokane that deals with the lines and the urban forest interface there. Just kind of sit down and say, how can we work together in a partnership? So I'm excited about that. I've done a lot of things and now that I've taken on the tree role, as I drive around, so I look at his driveway trees. So it's just really quite an energized thing for me today. Also, I want to share that our Arbor Day, Arbor Day celebration is scheduled for next Friday, which is the date defined, Idaho was accepted for their Arbor Day. And at 10 o'clock, we're going to plant a tree across City Hall on Lake Street, right next to the, to the playground. There's an old silver maple that has gotten storm, severe storm damage, we're going to replace it with a better tree for that location. And that's what I'm kind of finding too, is that with our forest or that really the location and the type of tree is critical for the long-term success. And also that I will be participating in the, the, the meeting tomorrow for the Pine Street sidewalk. And to represent the trees and the city's opportunity to partner with those neighbors in that area for street trees. So I'm all treated.
All right. Ken, thanks for stepping up in your, in the area of urban forestry, really appreciate that. With everything you do, you bring a lot of enthusiasm to it, so.
Thanks.
Any other announcements from staff? How about council? Yeah?
Time to move COVID update today. If not make our last meeting because it's spring break. But since the last time, I quoted statistics, we've had 19 additional deaths. And I'd like to again discuss for the moment silence for people that live in our community and health issues, for their parents and friends. As they have loved one.
Granted.
It's 30 seconds, please.
Thank you, ma'am. And thank you again for that reminder, Councilwoman. For those who struggle through this pandemic, and it's a good reminder to know that we are still in it. And we still all have a role to play and an opportunity to help support the health of our community. So hopefully you can all support our neighbors and friends by recognizing and practicing the protocols that we have been through last year. As our friends like CVC. So any other announcements from council? At this time, I have a proclamation I'd like to read in recognition of Arbor Day 2021. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting a tree. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving up paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and unify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I Shelby Ronstadt, Mayor of Sandpoint, hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day in the city of Sandpoint. And urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and the wilderness. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to grow out in the heart and promote the wellbeing of this and future generations. Next, advert announcements. Oh, you already gave us your report, Ken, so way to get that taken care of ahead of time. We should, next is the public forum portion of the meeting. This gives the public the opportunity to address council and myself regarding items on consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. At this time, I'll take just a moment to recite the rules and procedure for public comment during Sandpoint City Council meetings. Both during public forum and during other opportunities for public comment during the meeting. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general items during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda. A total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to the public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and did not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. Please note, if you're participating by Zoom, you'll need a working microphone on your smartphone, smartphone or computers in order to participate. When your name is called, you'll see a prompt on your screens when you, you'll need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. For those participating in the room in person, if you wish to speak, you'll need to fill out the signup form and hand it to the clerk up front here. The forms are available on the table by the door. In the interest of time, it would be appreciated if you please not repeat prior comments made, made by others, but simply state your support for those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed at any individual, organization, or business. Public comment opportunities during meetings are for comments only. Do not direct any questions to the mayor or city council or to city staff during your comments, please. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes, which will be counted down using our timer spotlight, stoplight rather. The green light will indicate one minute remaining. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds remaining, and when the light turns red, your time has expired. We will now begin the first 20 minutes of the public forum. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak?
Mr. Mayor, not that I'm aware of. If anyone who wanted to speak.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Stuart Howell, the resident of Sandpoint. I love the, I love the city, I love the town. Beautiful place, having a great deal, and very grateful to be here. I'd like to propose 30 seconds of silence in addition to silence that's already been observed for the people that have unfortunately passed away from being assigned as COVID deaths, to all the deaths by suicide, all the people that have lost their job and their livelihood by the overreaction to whatever this is. There's a lot of people that have taken their own lives due to the lockdowns. Sort of ridiculous overreaction being assigned to whatever this is, doesn't really hold up to any actual scrutiny. And people's lives have been devastated, not because of whatever the medical condition is, but due to policy, agenda. Whatever it is, I think we should take a moment and acknowledge all the people that have been put out of business and taken their own lives. Based on the political agenda that's driven the reaction to this. Thank you. You know, I just think it's very important to look at this matter objectively. And to search our hearts for our principles that would guide us towards looking at what is true and what is verifiable. And being honest about what the agendas are behind a lot of this stuff. I don't pretend to know exactly what's going on with it, but I do know there's a huge amount of con artists re-involved in the reaction to all of this, and there is a global and nationwide lockstep agenda to achieve certain political aims piled on top of a medical situation. And just ask that we all search our hearts to look for the truth, to do what's best and what's right for all of our fellow citizens. And I thank, I thank the council for your time.
Mr. Howell. We have anyone else who has signed up?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, if no one else would like to speak, that concludes the public forum portion of the city things meeting. We'll now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $1,187,994.08. Reflecting $567,979 for regular payables and $620,015.08 for payroll. Included on consent is approval of a sewer charge adjustment for the Greater Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce. Because Councilwoman McAllister is the executive director of the chamber and will abstain from voting on that item, I would like to entertain a motion to remove item 60, sewer charge adjustment from the consent calendar to be taken up prior to old business directly following the vote under remainder consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Sorry.
Seconded, this will be a real public.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Motion passes, the consent calendar is amended. Are there any other items, council, or any other, any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Would entertain a motion if the consent calendar would be approved? Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? So be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Consent calendar is approved.
Councilwoman Rule, did I call her? Yes, okay, we get.
Does council have any questions regarding the request for adjustment to the Chamber of Commerce's sewer bill? But do you want, anyone from the public like to comment on this matter? I will entertain a motion to approve the adjustment to the sewer bill for the Greater Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce that resulted in excess charges due to a water.
Certainly. Second.
And seconded, any discussion? So be a real call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under Old Business this evening is part two of the presentation on the draft multimodal transportation master plan. Which was introduced during our last meeting, meeting on April 7th. I will now yield the floor to Infrastructure Development Services Manager, Amanda Rose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And good evening, House members. We are excited presenting our part two of the multimodal transportation master plan to this evening. Our consultants that are on board with us here or online, I should say, we have Mandy Roberts with OTAC as well as Preston Stinger. We've met them in the past and they are looking forward to walking you through sections five through seven this evening. Before we jump right into our presentation, I just wanted to start off by letting you know and the public know that the full transfer or the full multimodal transportation plan is currently on our website. We posted it just before this meeting. So if you are on our homepage at sandpointidaho.gov, if you scroll to the bottom of that under the news section, there is the link to the multimodal transportation plan. So you can download a single document and that has all of the sections in it. So I just wanted to start off with something that is available. And with that, Mandy, I will turn it over to you to walk us through the PowerPoint. You could pull it up and then I can get this off. While she's bringing that up, I just also wanted to remind you that tonight is truly just an overview. We're not asking for any decisions this evening. We're intending to walk you through the contents of the sections that were just posted today. Coming back to City Council on May 5th, requesting your consideration for adopting the plan. So you have a few more weeks to consider the information that was posted tonight, and I'm certainly willing and available to discuss it individually and/or with anyone in the public in the meantime. Able to pull that up, Mandy, or would you like me to?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you guys were doing it there. I apologize. I can do that. Excuse me, I wasn't quite ready, but I'm getting there. Okay, so this is a part two presentation of the plan. And what I'm going to do is go through the slides and then we'll take a few minutes to kind of page through some of the planned sections with you. Just so you can get a little bit deeper perspective on what's in there. So as you will recall, we presented the first part of the plan, sections one through four, a couple of weeks ago. And tonight, we're going to do a quick walkthrough of sections five through seven. And then we'll take any questions or discussion that you might have. And the plan is to come back on May 5th for any further discussion and to consider formal adoption of the plan at that meeting. So here's just again, an overview of how the plans organized. There are seven sections plus the appendix documents. And I guess we'll, we will pause right here and just because we had circulated and posted sections one through four, we can take any questions or suggestions that council might have at this time on those sections.
I don't think we have any questions, Mandy. We started this.
Okay, that's great. Well, we will look forward to those after you have a chance to review the full document then. Okay, so section five is really focused on some improvement concepts for nine kind of areas of concern. Including the pedestrian network, the bicycle network, updating of truck routes. And then the Division Avenue Corridor, Baldy Mountain Road Extension, Great Northern Road Revitalization Project. The East-West Connection, which encompasses improvements at several locations. First, an avenue and Bridge Street slash Church Street, and then the US Highway 2 corridor. And the focus of this section is really on introducing the key issues, considerations, and proposed solutions. And those are both presented in narrative as well as in concept graphics. And these are, one thing we wanted to note to you all is, this is taking a deeper dive at these nine areas. But it certainly doesn't represent all of the projects and proposed improvements in the plan. Those are really encompassed in section six, which we'll talk about shortly. So we just felt it was really important to, based on the data analysis and our technical analysis, as well as the community engagement process to take these nine areas of improvement need a little bit further into concept so that that could help better define what needed to be done and the cost associated with that. I'm going to pause right there. Amanda, anything you want to say about that?
Thank you, Mandy. Yes, I just want to add that all of the concepts that are listed here and included in the draft plan were previously presented to council at a prior meeting. And we have taken since that time, feedback that we've received from the community, some, some comments and suggestions in that regard, and further refined those concepts. Politically, they're pretty similar to what was previously shown to you and that has been posted in our city hall lobby for several months now. It's been really enjoyable being able to engage with citizens as they're in our lobby and have conversations and point in a large board. As we discussed at the last meeting, we have had extensive public engagement and we've really tried to capture that effort in sections one through four. So tonight, we're not taking a deep dive into how we got the feedback associated with where we're at. Kind of part one was, here's all the problems and feedback we received, and tonight, we're really focusing on, here's the solutions that we're trying to bring forward. And I think Mandy said it really well, you know, these are, I call them, some of the community's greatest concerns and where the data was saying we needed to take a deeper dive. This list that is in front of you in no way, shape, or form represents the entire list. We have a lot more needs that are not listed in this slide, and the plan does address those. So I just, as we continue to go through these, I don't, I don't want to give the perception that these represents all of the challenges that we face from a transportation perspective. They're much broader. And I don't think this evening, since this is truly just an introduction to the sections, that we're going to take a deep dive into each one of these concepts, because we've already done that with you. So I guess at this point, given the list on the screen, is there any of those concepts that you would like us to pull up and have a conversation about before we go through the rest of the presentation? You can see in there?
Oh, okay. I'm really interested in the pedestrian bicycle priorities and.
Sure.
How that was.
If you want to bring, bring those maps up?
Yeah, could you pull up the pedestrian network and then I can kind of give a, some background on it?
Absolutely. Hold on.
You're fine. I'm going to keep talking while you're looking for that.
Yes, thank you.
So the pedestrian primary network was really based around the conversations that we've been having for a couple of years now. Particularly when we launched the code update associated with, how are we going to achieve sidewalk connectivity in a strategic manner? And so I would say our sidewalk priority network conversation began a couple of years ago, before we even started this. And arguably, it started years before that with the pedestrian and bicycle committee. We had an initial list developed of, here's the streets that the pedestrian and bicycle committee identified as priority streets. So we started with that list, and then we took a more comprehensive look at an analysis that we went over at the last meeting of walkshits and where pedestrians are most likely to walk. We also took the public feedback that we received and tried to kind of look at two different options. We can either say we want sidewalks on every street in town on both sides everywhere. That would be one approach. And arguably, maybe that's a viable approach. The other option is if we're going to strategize on where to spend our, and where to invest first and make sure that we have connectivity in, it's sort of an arterial manner. That's how I think of it. So in streets, we have arterials and collectors, right? The same concept has been applied to sidewalks. If I'm on a certain street, it's helpful to know that, let's say, Pine Street has the connectivity that I need. So if I can get to Pine Street, that network, that arterial of a sidewalk is going to get me to my destination. So it's really expanding the network and solidifying where are we going to focus our priorities. When I say priorities, I mean investment and I mean enforcement. So what you see on the screen here are orange lines. Those orange lines are intended to represent, I'll call them arterials. It's like our primary network of where pedestrians could go. That would be a safe, connected street or sidewalk, I'm sorry, on that street. That is also shovelled. So we've had challenges in the past, as we've discussed, with enforcing our code to ensure that the entire town is shoveling their sidewalks. The intent with this is to say, here's where we think we have priorities to shovel, and then we'll develop a policy that says, when we're out enforcing, these areas are where we need to focus that enforcement on, because we've identified that these are the sidewalks that we're telling kids and safe routes to school, et cetera, that you should be using these sidewalks.
So that's the 73, but is that in the current full document or?
Yes. This map was presented several months ago to council and hasn't changed, and it's also in our.
Well, I can't really visualize it from way over here, right?
And that's okay. Our intent this evening was just to introduce the plan, and then we can certainly take a deeper dive after you've had a couple of weeks to review it.
Okay.
And there's a big giant version of this in the lobby.
Yeah, and I just wanted to take a minute too to say that when each of you has an opportunity to download the PDF, you can do what I just did and kind of play around with the size of these maps. If you want to zoom in on a specific area and look around. You know, just in your PDF document, you can go in and look at different, different locations. So we tried to make this a really readable document with a good font size. It's just hard on these citywide maps to, to get that level of detail, but you can zoom in and, and get there. And then the next page is the 74 is the bicycle network. So a lot of the same principles that Amanda just spoke to you also apply to that network.
And this, the good point there, Mandy, the bicycle is primarily based upon the explore Sandpoint routes that have already been published and distributed. It just further expands some gaps that were existing in that, that system. Back to the pedestrian network, I just, I also want to mention that that network was not developed on the basis of where do we have existing sidewalks? So let's make those our priorities. It wasn't based upon where do we have the least amount of gaps? It was based upon where do we, based upon our analysis and community feedback, where do we think we need to have primary routes for pedestrians to utilize? Recognizing that some of these streets might require a substantial amount of investment. So I'm going to give you one last final thought on this, if I may. When we adopted the sidewalk code revisions. And we provided that property owners are able to pay an in lieu fee for sidewalk investments, right? So if you choose not to construct the sidewalk yourself, you can pay a fee instead. And we collect those fees and spend that money in the designated area. Those dollars, this plan enables us to say, we collected dollars in this area, we're going to invest it on these orange streets. It's all of us as a community recognizing how we're going to go about investing those dollars that we receive and where we want them.
Just a quick clarification on that. I understand everything you said. So when we're looking at the primary pedestrian network and we're looking at the orange lines. Does that mean we're going to have sidewalks on both sides of those streets or is that just saying we're going to have the full sidewalk?
The first goal would be to have a sidewalk on one side of the street as the priority. I think in, depending on funding, it would be fantastic to have sidewalks on both sides of these streets. However, from a strategy perspective, we've got to start somewhere. So the intent would be to start on one side. Work our way up to two sides.
As well as not a buckshot. This seems a much more focused and directed attempt to. Create safe pathways for our pedestrian bike as opposed to. An attempt to do all of them all at once. So I appreciate the attention to the detail and the. I know that you all listen to the multiple different travel, traveling. Methods. And a more focused approach is the way to go.
Thanks, I appreciate that. It is also consistent, this approach is consistent with other municipalities that are. Frankly scored really high throughout the nation of having good connectivity. So trying to not reinvent the wheel. And you can go back to that list of our concepts, yeah, that slide, please. Are there any other concepts that are provided on this list that you'd like us to pull up and? Have a discussion on?
Yeah, I have a question back to the multimodal.
The pedestrian network map?
No, the one on seventy-four.
Bicycle, okay.
Sure, multi-use, yeah. So I see you have a designation there, future, the dotted dark green line, future multi-use path. Can you dive into that a little bit? I see we have. What appears to be like a new connector on South Pine or East Pine Street on the Bridge Street.
For a future multi-use on Bridge Street?
Yeah.
Can you zoom in on City Beach there, Mandy?
Well, I see it on Pine Street and then I can't, the words of First Avenue. Kind of covered up, so it looks like it's unconnected.
Yeah, but the line should be. About dark green? No, not the dark green. He's talking about the section on Pine Street between First Avenue and Third Avenue. You have a really good eye. That line should be a designated shared lane. It should be a light green, not a dark green.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, and that would be, our apologies on that, but just to clarify, that would be across Bridge Street as well. Correct, Amanda?
No, Bridge Street would in the future have both. It's going to have a multi-use path as well as designated shared lanes. I think that's the part that.
Okay, okay, and it does have a path today. That's right. I forgot about that, but okay, yeah. Okay, we'll make that correction. Thank you.
I'm looking at the orange map. I know I'm probably going into way too much detail for today, but. Because they are currently building that new development off of Ontario Street. I believe before the creek, is that correct or after? It's within standpoint city limits.
Yes.
And because of the way Ontario Street is designed, I would think as that. Development. Exists that maybe thinking about extending that sidewalk to the standpoint city limit is going to be pretty important. Because that is going to be the main route for any children who may live there. To then get to these routes to get to any kind of school in a safe way. So I, before we finalize this, maybe a little bit of thought should go into that future piece. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
I do, yes.
Because that's a very unwalkable. Area.
Yes, I'm going to, I'll provide two bits of information that I think may help. So the first is Ontario Street is kind of its own. It's its own animal, thank you. And it's actually identified in section six as a capital improvement project to widen that street. Because it's not just a pedestrian issue, as you all know, it's substandard from a vehicle perspective. It doesn't have adequate shoulder widths nor does it have adequate sidewalks. So that's number one. We do have it as a proposed capital improvement. But similar to the, Mandy, I believe we have fifty-five. I'll just, I'll go ahead and give a spoiler alert. We have fifty-five capital improvement projects identified in this.
Correct.
The prioritization of those fifty-five. So we have the list itself and the prioritization of that has not occurred. We're going to talk a little bit more about how to prioritize that list when we get into section six. But I think the point is relative to this discussion because this map is saying all of these orange lines, all of these areas. We need sidewalks. The plan does not say this sidewalk is a higher priority than this sidewalk. So that's not the intent of it. This first phase is really for us just to say, this is where we want sidewalks to go. How we fund them and when we get them done is a separate conversation and won't be further solidified in this plane.
Well, I guess I'm, if that piece doesn't exist at all, but you're saying when road improvements occur, because that's a different piece of this. The sidewalk will come with that road improvement whenever that happens.
That would be the intent, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that section isn't left off of what we see as a future need.
It's an orange line right now, so no.
It's in, well, the orange stops at Lincoln.
The continuation of it to the new development. You're right, yes.
Okay.
It just doesn't, you're right, it doesn't have the adequate width at this time.
Amanda, have a question. So this map also doesn't show, you know, which side of the street would get the sidewalk would be prioritized. How would staff make, or how, in implementing this plan, how would we make that determination which side of the street gets the sidewalk?
We would first start with the condition of the, any existing sidewalks. Where can we make our dollars stretch the farthest, right? So if one side of the street has three quarters of sidewalk on it. And we would probably focus on that side of it. If both sides have no sidewalk. Then we would just need to assess it from drainage perspective, how many driveways are re-impacting, it would kind of be a site-specific decision. But what we found in looking at the condition assessment is we actually do have a lot of sidewalks throughout town. So this is kind of a map, more or less of saying, this is where we're going to fill in those gaps. So we'll fill in the gaps where we can stretch our dollars.
Any other questions, council?
And then I also don't see, maybe I'm missing it in my perspective on this tiny map. I was under the impression that we had. A trail at Larch and Fifth that kind of coursed behind that whole new subdivision. Or the whole multifamily complex behind Super One that then came back out just. Where the tracks are, but I don't see that represented in any way on this map.
That's correct.
And so can you explain to me why that isn't represented?
Mandy, can you go to the next page? You're on page seventy-four then? Are you talking bicycles or pedestrians?
Well, that's a multimodal path.
Yeah, so the primary route in what you're referring to there is actually on Boyer and Larch. Not going around in behind because we already have infrastructure that follows the same path. So the blue line's there and it was also on the orange line. So rather than providing a similar path to the east. We're focusing the efforts on Boyer and March.
Okay. Wasn't it, I don't know, maybe the mayor remembers the requirement that that development, that that. Piece of multimodal path is already going to put in there. Doesn't that piece of path already exist?
There's a sidewalk in that location. I can take a deeper dive at it and see if we've missed something here. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to hopefully do that because my understanding was that was part of that development. So you had to connect the current path that's in the march through that all the way back over to Boyer and they put it in the tracks.
That path is there. It's missing on the map. She's right.
Yeah, no, I mean, I thought it existed physically.
Perfect.
And.
So we will hit it at it. I apologize for that error. And I do just want to focus on, or not focus on, but what we're trying to show in these maps are not where all sidewalks and all pathways exist. It's where do we want the primary network?
Well, right, but I have some other thoughts about how that if was, anyway, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Because there's no time. I don't want to waste time tonight. The presentation, I was just curious as to why that wasn't. Shown anywhere. As far as pathway, let alone being put in one.
Gotcha. Okay, no, I really look forward to that deeper dive that that's why we're giving it to you in advance so we can have those conversations.
Correct, okay, back to this. Presentation, any other questions about any of the projects? Okay. Shall we move on just to touch on section six then? So this is the capital improvements plan for multimodal transportation. As Amanda mentioned, we have fifty-five projects listed in this section. And we've also described other administrative actions that are not capital projects because there's not a capital cost associated with them. But they are proposed actions that are part of the multimodal plan. So they're also included in this section. And we have put together cost opinions for these projects and added them up for the timeframes. That you see here, zero to five years, six to ten years, eleven to twenty years. And so it's a pretty, pretty big price tag. We are going to talk in a minute about the funding opportunities section, so hoping that the city will have the opportunity to leverage. As much funding as possible to start checking off this list. Let's see, do you want to talk a little bit about prioritization, Amanda? Do you want to cover that?
Yes, thank you, Mandy. A couple of things with prioritization as well as the capital improvement projects. Could you pull up the table just so I can show it as an example, please?
Yes.
So there's a fair bit of detail on each of the fifty-five projects that are listed. This plan is intended to supersede, if you will, any prior identifications of projects. So for example, we had an urban area transportation plan that had capital improvement projects identified in it. We had a downtown streets guide that identified projects, many of which have been implemented to date. This plan is intended to encompass all of our transportation. And when I say transportation, I always mean multimodal, all users, all of our needs for the next twenty years. So bringing all of that together and saying, what are our current community priorities? Into a single comprehensive plan from a transportation perspective. Obviously, water and sewer is not in here. And so that really helps us. Take here's all of our wants, all of our needs, and then it allows staff along with the community and city council to start strategizing. Of our priorities. So the first effort in that was saying, short term, midterm, and long term. Short term is kind of that zero to five where may already be working on the project, right? Or we may already have funds to do this project. Or we know it's such a priority in our community that we can't wait. Over five years to start this effort. And then there's other broader projects that may be. Require more design efforts. They might require substantial funding with external dollars that we put into, let's say, the midterm goal, right? And then we have our long-term goals that were categorized into that section again, based upon projected funding availability to some degree. But also looking at our community's desires for that project. My point is we need to take each of those windows and wrap them into an overall citywide capital improvement plan. Where we're taking a look at all of our priorities from a water, sewer, transportation perspective. Finding areas where we can overlap those efforts as well as look at current and projected funding availability. And then we can better prioritize this list. It's, I mean, this is a hundred million dollars. We currently do not. That's okay. Currently do not have a hundred million dollars to invest in all of these and I think.
Don't look at that.
I think the hard part is to come, is what I'm trying to spit out here. Prioritizing all of our wants and needs is going to be a difficult effort. But I'm really excited that we at least have our lists to begin that process and start having those conversations. So I just wanted you to recognize when you're looking at this short term, there might be a project that's identified in the short term. But because of funding or other reasons, we end up not doing it until eight years from now, right? These are just target timeframes, is my point. With that, any questions? I know you haven't had a chance to read the list. I anticipate questions the next time we meet. Just wanted to give you an overview of kind of how it's laid out in the plan. I will mention a policy action that I'm really excited about. We get a lot of questions and requests from residents to do street calming features in their neighborhood. Speed tables, as you've experienced on Ella, and it's been really difficult for us to administer that. Because there's a lot of standards that exist associated with that and criteria that should be factored into those decisions. Versus the, I'll use your terminology, buckshot approach. And so one of the actions that's included in here that's not a capital improvement plan. It's just we need to develop a policy of how we're going to handle those requests. Is there a cost-sharing approach? Where does it belong? Where does it not belong? And that way we can kind of give residents a better response when they're asking for those types of measures. So section, section six includes both of those categories, capital, and here's just some good action items for us to consider here in the future. Okay, Mandy?
Okay, so moving on, just a quick overview of section seven. And this is really a summary of all the different ways that transportation projects are funded in Sandpoint. And includes, you know, all the local funding streams as well as state and federal and grant opportunities. And so, you know, the city recognizes that it's going to really require a combination of resources to. Accomplish this plan and there's going to need to be a significant focus on outside dollars to. To, you know, grants and partnership funding and working with ITD and others to really make these projects happen as well. And shovel-ready is critical. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, Amanda?
Sure, thank you, Mandy. And can you pull up the plan in section seven real quick? I'd just like to show the graphic that we have in there as well.
Yes, I will do that.
Shovel-ready is not a new term. I'm sure most of you have heard it. It's used at the federal level and regardless of the type of project we're perfect, thinking, Mandy, we're discussing. So what you'll notice when you're looking at section six and our capital improvement projects. We might have a really large project such as the Baldi Extension. It's estimated at twenty million, so significant project. For us to better leverage our ability to get outside funds. It would be to our advantage in the short term to start getting some preliminary design efforts done with that. Because that makes our grant applications a lot stronger. Because we're able to say, if you give us the funds, we're ready to hit the ground running and we're going to complete this project in X amount of time. As opposed to a project that still has to figure out permitting, right away acquisition. Is your design even valid? Is the railroad on board with this? So the sooner that we start investing in that sort of design effort. The better we'll be able to achieve some of our longer-term goals. And so Jennifer, is there anything you would like to add as far as shovel-ready? I knew you and I've had many discussions about, yeah, okay. And the last bit I wanted to mention here is this, can you zoom in just a hair, please, Mandy? Sorry, I know it's hard to drive with a backseat driver over here. So this is a graphic that's in section seven and it's, it's really just trying to show sort of the order of magnitude. There's no dollar values here because the dollar values vary per year. But what you can see here is that. But what you can see here is that darker blue color, that navy color is typical outside funds. So we're trying to show here from a transportation funding sources perspective, because I hear this from a lot of people, right, a lot of citizens. Well, we, we spend a lot of taxes. Why aren't we getting better roads? And I think it's important for folks to understand that we get revenue associated with transportation in a variety of different ways, and taxes only make up a very, very small sliver of transportation funding as this graphic is trying to show. And so I worked with our finance director. She was really helpful in trying to kind of show a, an example. So this is representing 2020 and all of our transportation expenses, how were those funded? And so the section seven kind of goes into the details of each one of these colors, what that includes, you know, whether it's gas packs or your registration fees or state money. So just trying to provide you with the information of where the money comes from. All right, Manny, I think we're, we're good on that slide. And so with that, the last bit is our appendix section. And I'll just kind of briefly recap. We have a variety of different information in our appendices, particularly the data that went into developing these solutions. So if you're interested in reading the three hundred and forty-some page survey results, it's there. If you want to take a closer look at some of the, you know, the intersection analysis that we did, you know, we're showing an improvement at Superior and First Avenue. Why did we make that recommendation? You can go to the appendix and really look at the, the data yourself if you're interested. We are currently getting, these are really large files, so they are not up on the website yet, but they will be by the end of this week. So you'll be able to just individually click on them. And with that, I would open it up for any questions that you have at this point.
Great, thank you, Manny. If there's any further questions.
So this was actually, this whole section we just reviewed wasn't up.
The section we just talked about tonight? Actually, it was up about thirty minutes ago. So I, and we talked about this at the last meeting, just a heads up. So we, these are introductions. So rather than providing you with a plan on a Friday to talk about on a Wednesday, we're really saying, here's the plan for you to review for the next two weeks before we talk about it on May fifth. So I certainly don't expect anyone to get a document at 5:00 PM and be able to have a really detailed conversation in thirty minutes. This is just an introduction so that when you open the plan, you know what's in it. That's really the purpose of tonight's meeting, just like we've done with our past master plans.
Yeah, and I was riding my bike here, so I couldn't read it that quickly. Yeah, I'm sure that I'll have plenty of questions and set up some meeting kind of swiftly.
I would love that. That would be great.
A little more clarification on the first half since I wasn't able to be at that meeting and there's something I've I'm first time finding a public meeting to watch your presentation.
That's a great suggestion. We'll, actually, we'll go ahead and add that link to the presentation on the same new section, so you can just directly click it. That's perfect.
All right. Counsel is good. All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this agenda? Please come forward. A lot of agenda requests for, or I'm sorry, agenda requests for, a comment for? Okay, yeah, if you can, that'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry.
The record, of course, if you could say your name, your address, and, or I'm sorry, whether or not you reside in the city.
My name's Rebecca Holland. I reside in the Sully Valley, only five years, and I have a sandpoint business on thirty-two years. So I've been studying the plan, and I've got some major concerns with its overall presentation. While it's recognized that sixty-seven point nine percent of the people in the survey say they bike, there's very little information that was provided from the public survey. There's ample pedestrian issues, but I think biking is not given very much in terms of consideration. Overall, in terms of priorities, as you talk about it, the number one big issue that for those of us that bike, and I keep a bike in this town to get around in. My house is in here, but I have a bike here. And when I get around in town, and the thing I, I would like to constantly bring attention to is for those of us who like to go down to City Beach or to ride out on the Creekside Trail or the Pondray Bay Trail, there's one intersection that is so problematic that we have to go through. And that's at First Church and Bridge Street, malfunction junction in the biggest way. What was designated as the route that was going to be the safe route is gone. Now it's everyone coming into this. And I would just ask you please to make that the number one priority. Think about the kids of this town. Everyone was once a twelve-year-old. You should be able, when you're twelve years old and you've got your chores done and your parents have given you permission, to be able to ride down to City Beach and, or to your local beach and have fun with your friends. This is not safe. Parents are not going to allow their kids, are not allowing their kids as we get bigger and there's trailers, boat trailers and everything coming through that junction. It's not safe. It's always been the plan, I brought it up before, that when we came up with the color-coded plan is this, from the main section of town, not from South Sandpoint, but very main section, think of kids that live near Farland St. They make it on their bike and they're going to go to City Beach. They know where to pass over on Fifth and come on down. But now when you come into the downtown core, that has to be treated differently than being out on Oak Street. They need to have a separated lane. And that means giving up some parking, but that means you're prioritizing the safety of the young kids of this community and the families. I think when I looked at the cover, just the cover of this plan, the image on there was of a cyclist that is in spandex, flip shoes, et cetera. That's not the cyclist we, we need to be taking care of. We need to be taking care of people on cruiser bikes and families.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Please, thank you.
Is there anyone else who signed up to speak on this issue?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The first item under new business this evening is an overview presentation, presentation from city administrator Jennifer Stapleton on the results of the city survey on dog-friendly areas in Sandpoint.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trying to get us into a perfect. Mine is going to be a little bit easier to see tonight. We are talking about dogs. We did this, as council will recall, last, late last summer, we did a survey of area residents regarding our policies on dogs in our parks, concerns, issues, and perspective generally around our, our policies relative to dogs. We held off on implementation of this, moving forward with it until we completed the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and we are back visiting the issue of dogs in the parks. This survey, as we discussed during our Parks and Recreation Master Plan, this is actually one of the most successful surveys we have done of recent time relative to issues in the community. We had almost seven hundred responses to this, to this survey. Of those responses, the vast majority were from respondents living within our city limits, so that was good. And we learned that a very large number of dog owners were interested in giving us their feedback. We had others who didn't own dogs. They were not the majority of respondents for this survey, but shared a lot of verbal comments that we had to consider with this as well. We asked the question about where our residents are taking their dogs to exercise and or socialize. The vast majority are either walking them around their neighborhood or they're exercising within their, their yards. But we heard about a lot of the other dog-friendly areas around the community and within city limits. Our next most popular area was our Sand Creek Trail, Pondray Bay Trail, the Sandpoint Dover Community Trail, Mecanic Trail, Serengeth Trails, the Pondray Dog Park, and we'll see that in a little bit. People who have dogs are willing to travel in order to exercise them outside of the neighborhood or their yard. The Balto Dog Park, which is located in Dover Bay, the trails within, pathways within Lakeview, up on Baldi. Some had indicated other, they were just in our city of Sandpoint parks, the majority of which, under our current policy, don't allow dogs. We had a number of people that were using the former University of Idaho property, Long Boyer, and then other trails outside of city limits in our Figree Park. Regarding our policies, our current policies within the city, we asked to get some assessment whether our policies were too restrictive or they were too generous. What we heard in, in that regard is from our residents, the majority of our residents felt that our current policy on dogs is too restrictive. And certainly amongst dog owners, the majority felt that our policies range from in the middle to too restrictive as well. Next. And again, we broke this out, taking a look at dog owners versus not dog owners. And as you would suspect, our dog owners felt on the stronger side at the scale that our policies were too restrictive and our residents that don't own dogs felt we were either to the middle of the road or we were too generous. Oops. Giving myself away here. Similar to what we heard in our Parks and Recreation surveys of things they felt the city should consider, fenced dog parks rose to the top, and that was something that was considered as part of the another phase to the War Memorial Field there along the waterfront, and that's in that concept. Interestingly enough, this was our, our one area where both dog owners and non-dog owners were in agreement that this is something that should be considered. Our next most popular responses that we saw fairly significant differences, you can see here, between dog owners and those who don't own dogs was considering allowing dogs on pathways in all of the parks and additional on-leash locations with no hour time of year restrictions and dogs allowed in off-season in certain locations, and then followed by off-leash with no year-time restrictions. We asked about additional dog-friendly spaces that are open seasonally only when we looked at other communities that see an influx of visitors like we see in our community. It is not uncommon that we see that additional dog-friendly spaces are open on a seasonal basis only. Typically, you see that running from something like a September fifteenth to an April fifteenth. And in particular, around pathway and trail usage, just because the volume of pedestrians or bicyclists on those trails increases so much, that's when we typically see looking at other policies that then dogs also using that space is limited or prohibited during the peak seasons. City Beach has been a topic. We've talked about dogs at and in, at quite some length during multiple meetings. What we heard with all of our respondents, so this is city residents and non-city residents, the vast majority are in favor of allowing dogs at City Beach, and the split is with restrictions. And our lesser number is yes, but with no restrictions. So this kind of gave us the guidance as we started to look at policy recommendations that there is very strong support for allowing dogs at City Beach, but with restrictions. We saw basically the same split with our residents that we did with the combined residents and non-residents. So the feeling seems to be rather strong relative to City Beach. We asked some specific questions then, for those who answered yes with restrictions, what would those restrictions look like? The greatest number that we received from both all respondents as well as Sandpoint respondents was dogs off-leash during certain seasons only, followed closely with dogs on leash but restricted from sand. And then we start to get pretty split relative to restrictions for dogs off-leash during certain hours, dogs on leash on pathways only, dogs on leash during certain hours only. And then we had a lot of information that we were able to pull from, from written comments too, and where we kind of saw the split, especially relative to the, the sand, was the concern then about picking up after your dogs. And you can imagine that was very well split between dog owners and non-dog owners felt pretty strongly about dogs running loose, dogs on sand that unfortunately, and, and this is kind of a common issue we're dealing with in parks, as I'm sure King would be happy to speak to, people not picking up after their dogs, and it doesn't matter how many dispensaries we put out there. That is an ongoing challenge that we have. Relative to dog-friendly spaces, we asked about what parks or other areas again should be considered for seasonal use only for dog-friendly spaces. Vast majority, City Beach, followed by Travers, where we have the pathway, followed by none. And then we get to all, and then responses drop off pretty dramatically when we start getting into specific park spaces. As I kind of let the cat out of the bag earlier about residents' willingness to drive to take their dogs to a specific area, vast majority said yes, they would drive somewhere to take their dogs to exercise if they wanted to exercise them outside of their yard or beyond just to walk around the neighborhood. And then what we heard is the vast majority were willing to drive and over a mile. So we were trying to get some sense if we start looking at park locations, if we start looking at dog parks, for example, if we look at a single dog park and people aren't willing to travel to use the dog park, should we rethink that with multiple dog parks spread throughout the city? Or this kind of gives us some sense on whether a single dog park, at least for starting, whether that makes sense. And then also this reflects back on what we kind of heard at the front end from residents. Again, too, that we had a fair number of residents that were using dog parks at Dover Bay as well as up at Pondray. So we are seeing a willingness to travel. As a result, and I gave you kind of a summary, and I included the summary in your council packet as well, so you had a chance to As a result, and I gave you kind of a summary, and I included the summary in your council packet as well, so you have a chance to look at that, including I gave you what we had seen for written responses. So I believe you had forty some pages of written comments that we were trying to work through to figure out, how do we thread the needle? How do we kind of slice and dice on this? I wanted to open this up for discussion tonight with council. And we would come back with a policy at the next council meeting where we have landed from a staff standpoint, a relative to policy recommendations. And granted, we feel it may be a starting point, but a starting point that we can see how well things go and some of the concerns that we saw expressed in the written comments. Whether those become growing significant or issues as people indicate, it's much harder to roll back than to add additional opportunities. So at this point from the staff, and this is Kim, Cory, myself, we all looked at this and I sent this over to Linda too, since she's our data guru and said, if you can find where to thread the needle, or if we've we've gotten ourselves off the path here from what we've heard from the public, let us know. Our recommendations would be to allow dogs on the paved pathway at Travers Centennial Parks year round. And one of the reasons for that is number one, we maintain that in the winter time. And we heard through our our written comments that there is a lack of places for people to go, particularly in the winter months, and most particularly for our elder population. It's an area that we maintain. It's a way where they they can get exercise. Many of our elder residents like to exercise with their dogs. So opening that up at Travers Centennial Parks would be an area, and it's one of our more frequent areas for where we are responding to dog complaints or from citizens in it that dogs are in an area that they're not allowed. Our second recommendation would be to allow dogs at City Beach seasonally. Based again on the kind of fill in the fill in the blank questions as well as the verbal or the written responses that we've seen. Our recommendation at this point would be to allow dogs at City Beach seasonally only. On leash, in the grass park and on the paved pathway, again, for the same reasons down at City Beach. With a recommendation of a season of September fifteenth through April fifteenth. And then finally, our recommendation would be to move forward with completing design and pursuing funding for the dog park as envisioned at Memorial and Lakeview. Again, we were probably conservative in some of the recommendations relative to some of the feedback that we received. But it's it becomes difficult when we stretch as far as we can and then may find that we need to roll back. And there were a fair amount of concerns relative to people not picking up after their dogs. So if we find that that's not the case with expanding this, it gives us the opportunity for further expansions in the future. One other discussion that we had internally, and I did not include specifically in this policy recommendation, but probably should have, is at the trailhead to Macon Lake Trail. Our property sits at at the trailhead and so the parking lot. Basically through our property, we've got signs posted in a policy that dogs need to be on leash, and the way that usually works is people keep their dogs on the leash until they get off our property, and then they're off-leash. Our recommendation would be to allow that to be off-leash as well. At the trailhead through our property because they're just waiting to get off their property to take dogs off-leash, and we have not had any issues with complaints or other issues at Macon Lake Trail. So we kind of have a one-off policy ourselves there.
I'm still on the question. For the Travers and Centennial Park, I'm just missing that we're going to expect those dogs to be on a leash. They're not. If they're going to stay on pathway, so the leash needs to be added to that.
Yes.
And then I I really appreciate Linda doing like finding the needles in this haystack for us to be able to try to figure out a more cohesive plan. So those robust.
Yep.
So it was a challenge to try to figure out like, okay, what what are the people saying? What is it that they're asking for or not? City Beach. And maybe even just in addition, I appreciate this being as clean as possible to make it as easy to enforce for those who will and then for those to abide, but even those AM and PM times. And maybe it's from that early morning till so like five in the morning till at night. And we kind of let dogs do do their thing. And then same thing at the evening time. I that might be muddling up our situation a little bit too much. But those are those are times that the park is not used at its peak hour, which then would allow that openness and that flexibility for those dog owners that want this thing. Like, we're giving you this thing. We've heard you. And it's during the non-peak hours. It's in the morning. And there's a lot of folks that do these exercise and walks in at the top and the bottom of their day. So I would like to see that maybe talk more about in addition to if it's enforceable.
Our concern would be the enforceability with that. I can tell you right now that down at City Beach, we have added how many signs, Kim?
A lot.
Fifteen, twenty signs. Made the sign at the entrance larger regarding the no dogs. We're dealing with dogs down there. It's pretty much constant. Our community resource officers, we could almost have one of them down there full-time dealing with the dog issues and the complaints down at City Beach. So we did try to balance that with what the impacts on staff would be at this point. That's where we landed with the recommendation of the seasonally. I mean, we really tried to look at from an enforcement standpoint, what are we hearing from the public? How do we thread this needle? And how do we have something that's understandable? And those morning hours became a concern and perhaps through finalizing the design at City Beach, whether we can provide an area where we can somehow figure out how we can address the dog issue perhaps more robustly to allow it down at City Beach. But the the concern was we start opening it up in the morning and the evening. Now we're chasing it at nine thirty and we will have citizens and visitors who are by the book. They have issues with dogs being down there, and we'll start getting the calls at nine oh one a.m.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. Jennifer, my only recommendation would be for the seasonality to extend it through May or May, mid-May. I know we've had really beautiful weather the last couple of days, but typically spring can be pretty rough. And people, when I've been down there in, you know, the fall and the spring, when people want to bring their dogs down there, you see people with their dogs because they're enjoying a really nice day. I'm sure people will, you know, diehards will be down there in the middle of winter, a snowstorm, but I would think the time people really want to bring their dogs down there is on a really nice fall day and a really nice spring day. And we don't often get this in April. So and I don't think there's a lot of people bringing their families to the beach, you know, until the weather really warms up. So just something to consider is maybe extending it through May.
The one challenge that we've had this year is with our nice weather, which has been unseasonal and seasonably nice. In the last month, we have had days and weekends down at at the beach where we have literally been full because of the nice weather on the pathway, full in the parking lot. This year, we've really had challenges with our restrooms not being open and and not planning for those types of crowds. So that's where we landed that any in with the April fifteenth. If we run into kind of those shoulder issues, we've already hopefully resolved most of that on the shoulder issues, but May fifteenth, I wouldn't say it's it's not feasible either. So if council desires us to come back that way, we could certainly come back with May.
You never know what's going to happen in a year. You know, one year could be wonderful and the next could be terrible. So.
Or amazing with a lot of snow.
No.
Well, maybe we can add a dog to every survey since the public seems to take more pressure and filling out the survey.
Very important topic.
Yeah, city streets and everything else don't take precedence. So just add a dog to everything, I think.
There are sense from council, or we can come back. My is, and council put a man in. Yep.
All right. Yeah.
So my questions would go back more about it seems like we have a really large majority of dog owners that want more freedom. You know, I got through almost very similar comment, fascinating stuff. The mayor actual or something. I don't remember what, but somebody wants to go with you. My question would be ultimately about the enforcement piece and the cleanup issues, like are we factoring in how that is going to play back on, you know, do we have the manpower to do it, you know? We already know that the Bay Trail is problematic. So I can assume that anywhere we open this up is going to become just as problematic. So what is our plan to deal with all of that? I'm neither here nor there for as far as how we open up or where we do that. But are we thinking that far ahead to the problems that are going to arise? And by saying we're changing our policy, are we doing this for a year until we see what actually happens? And are we leaving ourselves some space to go? Okay, you know, we tried this, but we ran out of manpower and now we're having issues with our parks and we are going to have to reel that back in. And then the other piece that really stood out to me was that there are a lot of people that are willing to drive a mile or more. Is that correct on that?
Yeah.
The majority. What are we? We're less than five square miles here. So we live in rural part, one of the most rural parts of the country. So, you know, are we creating a problem on some levels that maybe you don't need to create in in manpower and such? I mean, there's all different opinions about dog parks, you know, it seems to me to make sense for maybe the elderly who can't get other places to have a place that's safe for them. But then I, you know, one of the comments that stood out to me most was that if we start to allow all of our pathways or parks to have dogs in them, you know, there still is a portion of the population that has that experiences, maybe traumatizing experiences with dogs. And are we giving them enough space to do their thing? Or again, my profession is a physical therapist. I mean, if you even get this, some of the people I treat, I'm lucky that they are standing up without even a tiny little stone in their pathway because that what might be what takes mouth breaks to head and sends them to the hospital, never to return home to the loved ones. So you know, are we making sure that we are accommodating for some of these places? Or are we broadening so much that then some of these people no longer have a place to go? So and that's near and dear to my heart. Could we expand a little bit? Yeah, probably. Do I want every park to end up looking like the Bay Trail because I'm walking around it and picking up after everybody else? So and I only have adopted dogs here and there that I care for. So I know that staff and our trusted staff has probably looked at this very, very deeply, but you know, as a council person, it's the ultimately that piece of our tax dollar. And are we going to have the money to take care of this?
I can respond a little bit to the when we first allowed dogs in parks at Hickory and Lakeview, if there was a year trial period. And then every, I think, through the education process, at that time, we had a very active group working towards that, and they'd actually committed to monitor themselves. We don't have that this opportunity this time, but I it may be, you know, I'm very supportive of our plan. I'm tired of going out to the sports complex and seeing my grandma walk around with her dog, and she's illegal to do it because there's no old places for people to do that. But I think that to have the dog owners and then have to take the ownership and incentivize by saying, here, this is your program. It's your opportunity. We're going to look at, you know, summer or whatever of these parks. And then I think people are good.
Okay, so we're talking definitely about an assessment period, not.
Well, I'm just saying this, we did last time. I'm not saying one way or the other.
Yeah, and I know we did do that last time. And so I would just like to know that we have some opportunity to step up. And of course, all dog owners and not dog owners live on a belchay curb. So
my recommendation on it would be that we we make the policy changes, and if need be, we can go back and revise it, particularly relative to the dogs and the parks. It's specifically in city code. So we need to go through with ordinance changing city code and to change city, city code's really not designed for a one-year change. So we feel I think overall from the staff side, and Kim can speak it to me, it speak to as he thinks I've got the wrong perspective, but I don't think so. Relative to the paved pathways, we have this conversation in the office all the time, particularly at Travers and Centennial. We have elderly people walking their dogs on those pathways all of the time. And I'm going to tell you honestly, we don't enforce it. Because it's our older population that's out, and it's a place that's cleared, and they're they're walking their dogs. If anything, where we had to have some further discussion and where we see potential challenges relative to these recommendations, honestly, is when we start opening up the grass park. Now, that's that's where we potentially get into more issues of dog going and people not cleaning up after their dogs. On the pathways, we're regularly maintaining the pathways. In the winter, we're clearing it. We're maintaining the pathways and no, it's not ideal for us to pick up our, have our staff pick up additional work if people aren't picking up after their dogs. There's probably less risk of that for staff when it's on the paved pathways, more so when we start getting into the open grassy areas.
But City Beach is completely on leash as far as.
Yes, correct, because that's part of the concern is the off-leash. Now we're doing a lot more picking.
Turn your back and people are like, yeah, I didn't even know.
And they didn't know their dog did it. And yeah. And we can get this posted as a proposed policy change. And and that's why, again, this was brought forward as a discussion item tonight, not a final decision. So the public has a chance to hear about it. You have a chance to think about it and hear from citizens. And we'll come back with policy for proposed adoption at your next council.
Right. Council good on that? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter?
I'm not aware of anyone, Mr. Mayor.
The final item on the agenda this evening are a couple of ordinances reflecting proposed building and planning code-related amendments. Manda will introduce this item, starting with the staff presentation on 2021 building activity.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We are going to provide a brief presentation this evening to kind of walk council and the public through the proposed amendments, the what and the why. The contents, the complete contents are obviously in your staff report that was posted on the meeting agenda. And this is going to be a bit of a team effort. So I'm going to kick us off with kind of some background information and then walk through our first proposed change. And then I'm going to have some of our other staff come up and discuss the other four amendments. So with that, I'd like to kind of give some background and really a perspective on where we're at today when it comes to growth, specifically around building and planning applications in our community. We talked a lot about growth. We talked a lot about the need for housing. But we have not in recent history provided a graphic like this at this forum. So the information in front of you is showing building and other permits as far as a quarter comparison over the years of 2021 and 2017. So if you look at the blue color, that is quarter one, which is our current quarter that we just completed, those are all building and other permits. So although it says building, every building permit application includes a planning and zoning component and review to it as well. So it's dual in that regard. You can see that we have over doubled in the past three to four years. So if you're just looking at the blue, we are projecting that 2021 is going to. So if you're just looking at the blue, we are projecting that 2021 is going to have a significant increase when the year is over compared to these prior years. If we continue to track in this regard. What is not shown on here that's noted on the bottom is these are permits that are issued. So what you're seeing there in the graphic is these folks have their building permits in hand and they're constructing. We have about 180 to 200 additional units, not permits, because one permit could have more than one unit with it, but about 180 to 200 additional units that are currently pending just been sampled. So meaning we're processing their review, we are about to issue their permit, they're about to pay their fees, and we anticipate that construction starting within the next 60 days. So that is going to send this even more off the charts is the point I'm trying to make. Why does this matter so much in a code amendment conversation? Um, the most direct way I can say it is we're really feeling our code more than we have felt it in in prior years. What I mean by feel is we're having to apply it. Um, in 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 some of those um examples, we're applying them in kind of unique scenarios where someone's trying to get really creative with a lot that hasn't been developed on in the past. And so we're having to kind of dive into the code to figure out, how could we say, how could we find a way to yes in this example, right? And we're finding some pinch points fundamentally in the code. So that's what we're going to talk a little bit about tonight. Um, but I just wanted to give you some data, and I have a couple more slides on the data. I also thought it was interesting, I spoke with our building official Christine Woman um this evening as we were prepping for this discussion. And today, the note that you have on here, today, we have 30 building permit applications that are currently under review. So we typically, assuming that we have all the information that we need, we typically process a building permit within 10 to 15 days upon receipt. There are exceptions to that, different circumstances depending on the complexity. But the point is, um, those 30 building permits will be issued here in the next 10 to 15 days, most likely. So these numbers are only going to increase, and that pending number is only going to increase. Not only do we have growth within our community, we also recognize that Honduree, Hootney, and some of the areas of unincorporated, Bonner County are growing. Why does that matter to us? Because we're the water purveyor, as many of you are obviously aware. So as our neighboring communities continue to grow, it is directly impacting our staff as well because we process water connection permits for all of those. We process new water accounts for all of them. Our billing department is processing more. And so I think this image is really important um to just convey. There at the bottom, you can see, this is, so the graphic is just for a first quarter comparison. We're not looking at the total here, we're just looking at quarter one. And you can see the blue represents 2021. If you just jump ahead to the right-hand side, um, you can see that in 2021 total, we are far exceeding past years. 2020 as well as 2019, from a regional water account perspective. The key word here is account. So these are folks that have an active account with us, their water is turned on, they're using the water, and they're paying us um appropriate fees. What this doesn't represent is similar to the pending conversation we just had about building permits. We have approximately five times as many as you're seeing here just processed recently, where they've tapped our main and we're just waiting for them to complete their construction so that we can authorize their water to be turned on. So this data isn't even reflective of the growth that's actually happening that here in another six months. When you see this graphic, and I come back to you with that information, we'll we'll be able to really capture better the full impacts of the region's growth and how that's also impacting our team. So wanted to give you that preface before we dive into some of these code amendments because, um, and I'll just jump to my next slide. Why would we amend the code? Number one, city council asked us to, you asked us to refine our code and take a look for these types of pinch points. What we're presenting tonight is really specific to private development as well as our ability to um take information and feedback we've received from the public and applicants and staff um and and find a way to do it better. And I say do it better um because we could go about refining the code every day. There's lots of improvements that it needs to um really have a deeper dive on. What we focused on are some of the highest pinch points, like about ones rising to the top. And we anticipate coming back to you um in subsequent meetings with more of these changes. It's difficult to capture them all in one night, so we're kind of taking them in chunks at a time. And so with that, I I'm really excited about the ones that we that kind of rose to the top because I'm confident if if passed, that we're going to improve not only some of the confusion that currently exists with applicants that are trying to process, um, but I think the overall efficiency and processing of it is also going to improve, so we're excited about that. You didn't think you could be excited about regulation? The team that is here tonight is is really excited to talk to you about this. So proposed amendments, um, we have tried to break them down into kind of categories. The first one um is title seven, chapter three regarding new curbs and gutters. Um, I'm going to go ahead and give you um a brief presentation on that with some photos. It's the only one of these that really justified the need for some photos, so we're not going to have a presentation on the others, but we'll certainly go through the proposed amendments and show them on the screen. And with that, I will jump right in. And actually, I'm going to go ahead and pause, Mr. Mayor. We want to see if there's any questions at this point or?
Sure, any questions at this point? Please carry on.
Thank you. So title seven, chapter three, section nine, it revolves around new curbs and gutters. Before I show you the amendments, I'll just boil the current challenges down into three points. The first point is the current code is a one-size-fits-all, which is frankly difficult to apply to the various situations that we have throughout an existing town and existing infrastructure. Second, um, its effectiveness varies, meaning we're placing curves in locations, and I'll show you photos, um, where its effectiveness is really questionable. And number two, um, some of the curve that's been installed has unintended consequences. I also think it's important to give you some history. Our current code um was adopted in conjunction with our sidewalk code. And the two were really married up um fairly well. So if you were installing new sidewalk, those parameters triggered that you needed to install a new curb. There is sound logic in the fact that curb is one way to help protect pedestrians. That is, there's data behind that, it does help, because if you're going to veer off the road, hopefully you hit the curb before you hit the pedestrian, right? Um, however, back to one-size-fits-all, just because we have a sidewalk doesn't mean that the risk is as high on all streets. So we have some uh local street classifications, right? Where we may have sidewalks and the risk for someone going off, going through a five-to-10-foot grassy buffer or ditch um and then hitting the sidewalk is not omitted, but it's lesser than if we were traveling on boyer, let's say, right? Or we have more of a minor arterial, the speeds are higher, they're closer to 35, our traffic volumes are higher, so the risk naturally goes up. And in those locations, it probably does make really good sense to have curb protecting pedestrians. But that's not how this one-size-fits-all code was applied. He said, kind of in a patchwork of sidewalk improvements, you're also going to put in curb. So just like we have a patchwork of sidewalks, we have a patchwork of curbs throughout town. The problem with that is the number one reason for curbs is not pedestrians, it's actual, it's actually for the conveyance of stormwater um into a broader system such as catch basins and stormwater pipes that convey hopefully eventually to treatment systems. Um, and so with the um focus of curbs and gutters really being on stormwater, that's the result of three, these three bullets, right? We we focused it on pedestrians, which was good and well-intended. But our recommendation, as you'll see this evening, is more to focus it in alignment with stormwater needs because that's really its number one intent. So with that said, I'm going to show you some pictures, because pictures speak a thousand words. Um, and I encourage you, as you're going around town, to really look at where we have curb and where we don't. So this is a um, an example of where the curb turn terminates, and it's actually creating um erosion at this location. So what's happening is this sidewalk line that you see on the screen, that's a property line. So the improvements that were required ended right at the property line. We have a brand-new sidewalk that's not connected, which we've talked about and how we're going about trying to prioritize and fix those gaps. But we also have a curb. This curb is not functioning. It it frankly decides protecting pedestrians is not conveying stormwater. Further, our town is really flat, so this street is really flat. And without having proper survey of what the grades of the curb need to be to provide enough grade so that the water actually flows, that's what I mean when I have a bullet that says their functionality really is questionable in some locations. In other words, the best way to do curbs is to have a proper design with survey and do it in a holistic manner, such as a block-by-block perspective associated with a stormwater master plan that's taking that water and putting it into a conveyance system that's going somewhere. So that's one example. This is another example where we have a curb with a sidewalk. And you can see, um, one of the unintended consequences is if this road um has enough conveyance and the water is traveling down the face of the curb, we're actually concentrating flows onto the adjacent property, which isn't fantastic. Um, in addition, we are preventing in this application pretreatment of stormwater. If there was not a curb and this was graded in a different manner, that stormwater would be going into a grassy area instead of remaining on this asphalt surface and getting some form of pretreatment to some degree. So if this was an arterial or a collector potentially, um, and we were doing it in a holistic manner, we would have catch basins along the way, we could even have curb cuts where we could still get some of that pretreatment going in through a swale and back out. The point is it needs to be engineered and not done in a patchwork, is staff's recommendation, and really the basis of these changes. Well, the wrong way. This is a great photo, um, which I really give kudos to Bruce Robertson. I asked him, um, our our public works technician to go out and take some photos because he's the one who's been applying this code, and he knows the challenges the best because he's out there with the property owners and the contractors trying to make this all work. And this is a great example because here is a catch basin, um, that's kind of off the roadway. I realize it's in the shadow, but you trust me, it's right there. Um, so this property owner is getting ready to build, and he is supposed to put by current code curb in this location. So by doing that without curb cuts, we would be effectively cutting off where the stormwater is currently designed to go and enter into that catch basin. So we could go back to the property owner and say, you need to move this catch basin, and you need to put it into our street. I appreciate the thanks, thank you, because that is a huge expense, and that's the face we get from property owners um when we tell them something like that. And then they say, well, where is this water going to go if I put the catch basin in the road? Right, good question. You're going to have to go all the way down the street and fix the stormwater issue because if you put it where we're asking you to move it to, it doesn't actually go anywhere. So it becomes the circle of a conversation with property owners. Um, and that's what I mean by it's been very challenging for staff to find solutions for folks with this. Um, by omitting curbs in these locations, it doesn't mean that we don't care about where stormwater goes. It's just that triggering it associated with putting in um a building or triggering it in association with putting in a sidewalk is not always the best application, and we think we can do better. I think that's the end of my pictures. So with that, I'm going to pull up the proposed code and. Mr. Mayor, before I, um, as I work on pulling up the the code here, um, would it be okay to open it up for any questions on those photos?
Sure. Council?
I was trying to guess what the addresses were.
Oh, Andy would be right now.
Had Andy take the picture.
One of the things that you did say, like, this is just a statement that I think that needs to be brought back up, is that in I'm I'm not a property developer, but I have heard people let use accusations that the city's doing this, cities doing that, all that kind of stuff. But you had said, your statement was, how do we find a way to say yes? Like, I I deeply appreciate how deep you guys are digging and looking and testing the code. And I appreciate the code currently written, being tested the way it is so that we can have a a a more clear and concise way to say yes to our people. So it it the the city is not an obstruction. They are there to help and to assist and to say yes, which is, I I think that there's some justification that is inappropriate and misplaced. So I really appreciate the the statement that you've made about saying yes, as well as a big thanks to the staff, which is going to be yet to come, how hard they worked at presenting, providing us with this.
Thank you. Go ahead and just walk us through this particular um proposed revision. So the, in your packet, you have the complete current code with tracked changes. So we're showing you all the red lines as well as any new um language in underlying red. So what we're proposing is rather than the current conditions, as I mentioned, being associated with um just pulling a building permit or some sort of action on the property owner in that regard, we're suggesting that this code would apply to all zones, clarifying it doesn't matter if you're industrial or multifamily, this applies to everybody. Um, so as required, where new streets are constructed, so that goes back to my statement of we need to do this in a comprehensive perspective, engineer looking at grades. If we are putting in a new street, it is absolutely achievable and reasonable to install curbs at that location. And this code is proposing that we continue to do that. Because it's more well-thought-out and it's designed. Second, um, or as determined necessary by the city engineer in conjunction with a building permit or parking lot construction to satisfy the provisions of the stormwater management ordinance. We have an entire chapter about how to address stormwater. And we're saying because curb is so integrated into that overall stormwater management plan, that if our stormwater management ordinance is saying you need a stormwater plan, then curbs might be a part of it. So it's kind of trying to provide that nexus between the two. By making this change, what you'll notice is that the uh property owner who wants to put an ADU in the back of their uh single-family dwelling, where with this change, we would no longer be asking them to put a curb. If we wanted curb in that location, the approach that staff is recommending is after we've completed a stormwater management plan, then we need to find a more holistic way to achieve that curb in that location versus putting it on a patchwork of property owners.
Just like a capital improvement project or?
Exactly, yeah. Part of, a great time to do this actually is part of our pavement maintenance. So really looking at kind of combining a whole complete street rehab where it makes sense. Sometimes, sorry to go off on this, it's a subject I enjoy talking about, so.
Would they bond that? Would we require them to bond it or no, just?
No, it would just be, it would become on us. To that end, there are times when no curb is actually a great solution, and that might be what we decide is best in our stormwater management plan for some locations, right? Because we could do a better ditch, and as long as that ditch is being maintained and it has the right, um, you know, landscaping, and it can be a more effective solution. Um, curb cuts can be challenging in the Northwest, they're possible, but they also get caught up in clouds pretty easy, so. It's kind of a mixed thing. Um, the other section that's been changed is really focusing on construction requirements. Um, we kind of got specific in the code, and what we're suggesting is that we follow a state standard, which is the Idaho Standard for Public Works Construction, whatever the latest edition is. That document already has curb details in it. We actually created our own many years ago. Um, and so contractors have had to create custom forms for our custom curb. Our curbs aren't that special, so we just like to follow what everybody else is doing.
I thought that was actually wonderful.
Um, and then, yeah, the rest of it is just clearing up that this isn't in conjunction with the sidewalk or what you're doing. It's more in conjunction with, what do you need to do for a stormpark or something? So with that, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any um other uh presentation matters on this particular code section, but we're not quite ready for um the ordinance discussion yet because we have one more bit to discuss in this category.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
So with that, I would like to ask Christine, if you don't mind. Christine, our building official, has been really helpful um in proposing some of these code amendments specific to single-family homes. I'm going to go ahead and and give you a a summary of what this is including, and then I think Christine can either help answer questions and or try to end a bit more on um her experience dealing with this code. So Christine, um, as our building official, is having the direct um responsibility for making sure people comply with our code um specific to stormwater and a single-family residential homes. So what we're proposing here is a clarification. In inconsistency, we refer to them throughout our code and the industry as detached, single- In consistency, we refer to them throughout our code in the industry as detached, single family dwelling structures. So it was a little clunky currently. And just really clarifying that when we say that, we also mean accessories there, accessory structures there too, as well as duplexes. It's a little confusing. A single family dwelling is a duplex is a single family dwelling. Even though single, I think it would be one, it's actually a duplex is a single family dwelling. So we're just making sure that's really clear in here that if you're doing those things, that the stormwater management plan will not be required. So we have a really large chapter on stormwater management plans. It's very robust. It serves us really well, but it has been a bit of a burden for single family residential developers and homeowners frankly. And so what we're saying here is that instead, they need to comply with our best management practices. This is consistent with how other jurisdictions have handled it. And I'll let Christine kind of speak a little bit more to how it's currently going and why this change would maybe be beneficial.
Amanda, Chris, Mayor and council members, thanks for considering this, this change. I think it could be a huge benefit for permit holders and the city. So, so the question of duplex and single family dwelling, basically they're just treated the same under the building code. They're treated as the same type of construction, if that helps. Because it is kind of confusing. So so residential project permit holders are asked to provide erosion and sediment control plans, which is not a full stormwater plan. It's a scaled down version that basically just addresses construction site control, stormwater, and erosion settlement. For some builders, this is super straightforward. They have the equipment. They know what to do. They build a lot of homes. It's easy for them, but honestly, for maybe most of our permit holders, homeowners, for example, this can be super difficult and confusing. It can be difficult for them to know how to develop a plan. Lots of people aren't familiar with all the measures and requirements and how to comply. So by providing a best practices document that we will provide as an attachment to each building permit that, that this applies to, it'll be much more clear and easy to understand what's expected. From visiting a lot of building sites, it's been my observation that it's often really difficult for permit holders to comply with what, what was drawn on their original site plan and their permit documents. Lots of things can change. The location of a spoilt file can change or there could be an inlet that wasn't shown on the plan. And then, then they're saying, what do you want me to do about that? And not having the best practices document can make a difficult situation or a really awkward situation where they don't have direction. We're not there 100% of the time on the site to give guidance and answer questions. Or we don't want to pause the job while they go back and revise a plan. So I'm excited about just having this document that has basically the answers to clear direction, answers, lots of pictures. It, it addresses almost everything that can happen to affect stormwater on a construction site. And gives the permit holder really clear direction for how to comply with erosion and sediment control requirements. So I'm excited because I think that going this direction, instead of asking people to submit a plan and then stick to it strictly, will allow us to achieve much better compliance and, and the overall goal of managing erosion and sediment control on construction sites.
The second portion of
Another quick question. Does that eliminate the SEEP program then? Receive that?
That is exactly what we're getting into. You're welcome. So section 11 dash 3 dash 13, so title 11, chapter 3, section 13, revolves around training and certification. The word SEEP is not actually in our code. However, what we're referring to there is a program in the state that meets the requirements of this section of code. So our code currently says that all persons in charge of a construction site shall have all of this training and certification. And so we in the past have been saying to meet this, if you have the SEEP certification, which is a stormwater erosion education program, I'm going to get my acronym straight there for a second. If you've gone through that, then you meet this, the intent of this section of our code. The challenge with that has been, well, I'll let you speak to that actually.
I can speak to that. The challenge has been that we've asked for someone who has the SEEP certification to develop and initial the plan. So to get a building permit, a residential building permit, you have to have a site plan that shows your erosion and sediment control and it has to be signed by someone who's certified. But that person is typically not on the building site. The, the original plan may or may not accurately represent what actually happens on the building site. And that, the, the person actually doing the work isn't maybe that SEEP certified person that developed that plan. So there's kind of a breakdown. And so what I'm seeing in the field is that it, it's only really being implemented marginally. For example, the, the SEEP, the certified person that drew the plan isn't there when materials arrive and interrupt or the silt fences moved or the walls are moved or there's a rainstorm and water starts, mud starts flowing into the street. And it's, it's not always realistic that that person's going to be able to be, like the, the guidelines are that the SEEP certified person would be actively involved on the building site at all times within one day of a rainstorm and every seven days and checking in and, and that's really difficult to to do in, in this climate right now that we have of super busy construction where maybe we only have a couple certified SEEP people preparing these plans and we have, and they've, they've signed 50 plans. It's just unrealistic that they're on every job site. So with the best practices document, I think we have a much higher, much better chance of having people have more tools at their disposal to, to find answers and stay in compliance.
I appreciate that, Christine. I'll just add to it. The SEEP program is certainly valuable. Its applicability on larger scale projects makes a lot of sense. And so having this program remain in our city code, where if you're doing a commercial development or you're doing a subdivision and you're doing more substantial grading and disturbance of the ground where you're more likely to see such erosion. We as staff think that that is a lot more effective than yes, having a SEEP certification there or some other approved, like a CECL certification to, to implement that works great. The fact is, is it sounded really good, but the implementation on single family homes was, has just proven to be impractical over the years and a cost burden. And not that it should just be solely a cost decision. Stormwater is really important. But we just, again, we think we can do better. And I really appreciate Christine's feedback on it because being able to say, your permit says that you can allow sediment to leave the site. It's currently leaving the site. It says that you should probably put in a construction entrance to handle this issue or some silt fence. That's a much more effective conversation with somebody versus the plan you submitted doesn't apply to these conditions anymore. How are you going to fix it? She really gave me them and she said the tools. Did that answer your question? Yeah. Again, the proposed change is that those who construct single family dwelling structures and accessory structures thereto are exempt from needing to be certified or having a certified person immediately available. The burden is on Christine to make sure they're complying with the building permit. Yeah. Okay. So if she's on board with this change, I figure it's not so bad. With that, Mr. Mayor, that wraps up the first ordinance that we were presenting to counsel. If you would like to, I, I'm not sure if you want to make a decision on the first ordinance and then move on to the second or shall I keep?
Yeah, let's go, let's do them all. And then do we have any questions at this point for the first one? Okay. Yeah, let's go ahead and move to the next one.
Excellent. You can stay up. If you don't mind. And I'm actually also going to ask our interim planning director, if you don't mind. Happy to grab an extra chair for you.
Yes, Darren in person.
Okay. So team member clearly. We have a couple of sections in the second ordinance related to accessory buildings. That's the first section. And then we'll be talking about accessory dwelling units, which are accessory structures. So those two things are very pretty close to one another. And then last but not least, we're going to have a conversation about variance process. So I asked both Christine and Darren, by the way, great to have you in person tonight, to help present on this one because it kind of, it goes between both building as well as zoning. So with that, Darren, do you mind starting us off with section or title nine, chapter one?
As exciting as zoning is, it is difficult to follow dog waste and non-storm. Manage some expectations there. So do you have a really interesting zoning ordinance? Some really good and progressive provisions in there. But like many ordinances through time, it develops into what we call Frankenordinance in the business. It gets pieces and parts gone on to it because a particular problem will come up and somebody will write in an amendment and stick it in the code, but they don't pay much attention to how that's talking to other pieces of the ordinance. And so through time, you get a code that just is difficult to administer from the staff because it doesn't talk well to itself. And provisions get placed in odd places and there ends up being a lot of redundancy. And we end up chasing our tail around a lot as we're trying to administer this code and apply it to real world situations. So that's your, your sort of setup for why we're doing some of what we're doing. The first section that you'll see the 915 dealing with accessory building regulations is a good example of just redundant provisions within code. Most of these things are addressed elsewhere and more properly addressed elsewhere. And so what we did here was basically just carve out some of the provisions, delete provisions that were no longer necessary, didn't make sense in this location because they were covered elsewhere in the code. And so those are, you know, rather pedestrian and frankly, not all that exciting. The exciting stuff does come in though with the accessory dwelling units. And you do, here I compliment you again that you have some very progressive provisions regarding ADUs. These are typically, they can be controversial within a city. You know, we, when I worked for the city of Boise, we like to think of this as providing sort of a hidden density, right? It gives you a bonus. It allows homeowners to accommodate an elderly parent or a child. It allows you to provide somewhere for someone to live in the community, to age in the community in place or to provide rentals, you know, as the situation dictates for, for your own personal needs. So they're a good thing to have and you have generally good provisions with regard to accessory dwelling units. We just cleaned up a little bit of language. And the, the most significant change is in provision B5, they're dealing with the maximum size. So the maximum size accessory dwelling unit previously allowed the 650 square feet. We bumped that up to 900 square feet. This is for a couple of reasons. One is a little more of an inducement for people to do it. If you're going to the trouble to build, adding a couple hundred more square feet, you get some economy of scale. You know, construction costs being what they are, it just made sense to allow for a little bit larger unit. A 30 by 30 garage structure is a generous garage, but a fairly typical dimension as well. And so if you're putting an accessory dwelling unit above a garage structure, 30 by 30 or 900 square feet, then is a logical size. And then we just carved out some of this, you know, the, the provision dealing with internal staircases and those kinds of things just make it difficult to administer. So it's straight 900 square feet across the board and we don't burden the staff with having to do those calculations. And then the provisions further down regarding the setbacks. Again, you had just some problematic language and dealing with setbacks in this section, treating them differently than other accessory structures or frankly, any structures in a given zone. Setbacks are properly dealt with in the zoning designation itself. And so these were redundant. They were also more restrictive than the other setback provisions within your code. And we couldn't figure out why. I mean, why should an accessory dwelling unit have a 10 foot rear setback rather than a five foot rear setback for a regular accessory structure? You know, I don't know why, because a setback's a setback, a structure's a structure. And just because there's an ADU and it doesn't, you know, create a particular onus to, to have it setback further than a garage would be. So just again, cleaning up some of the language there to deal with that. And then finally, on the variance provisions, the council will remember, we had a recent application where we were seeing a variance after the fact from something that had been built. And then the applicant was asking to cure a defect, you know, essentially not following their own approved building plans through asking you, and first the planning and zoning commission, and then you want to feel to fix that through the variance application. That's really not where you want to be with variances. Variance is a very particular animal with, both in the state code and your code. And they are to be based on a very physical hardship that's associated with the lot. Typical scenarios would be slopes or wetlands that you're trying to avoid. Or you literally can't meet a standard that everybody else in the zone has to meet. And so therefore you get a special variance from that division. And so we did, we took a very light touch. Initially, we looked at a heavier hand with that section of code because it does need some help. But it's like plumbing, you know, we start touching one thing and then we have to fix other things in the code. And we just finally decided that in this case, let's fix the media problem in front of us. And then we're going to take a little bit more time to be a little bit more thoughtful about that section. And honestly, hopefully, before I'm done working with you all, we'll be looking at the organization of the entire title nine zoning ordinance and reorganizing that in a way that's more logical, both for your citizenry and for the staff to apply and for you to hear complications. So I hope that covers that in depth and that for you. If you have questions, happy to take those.
Yeah, go ahead.
There was a comment when it came to the accessory dwelling piece that were increasing square footage, but it commented toward number of bedrooms. And so I'm under the impression you have a lot of experience. That's what I've been told. And so can you speak to that? Why that really makes any difference if you're just allowing people to live in the square footage?
You know, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, or Councilmember, thank you for the question. It, it's really a policy decision. And when you it gets to be a matter of crowding, I suppose, in the floor plan, for one thing. There really is no magic reason why you couldn't have two bedrooms as opposed to one. Sometimes provisions like that are added to maybe use just to make them more palatable for the general public. There's ten, there tends to be a good deal of concern about adding rental units to single family residential zoning districts. And you tend to get a lot of pushback when you're citizenry. So I, I'm just speculating on why that provision was put in your code in particular. But there's, you know, that's a policy question for you. And if you felt like it, that is, you know, superfluous or unnecessary, there's no reason to limit it because the square footage limitation really boxes a design in anyway.
Right. Yeah. And just as all building occurs. well, building occurs and as our real estate costs have escalated, just sort of thinking forward to, you know, our teachers and our store clerks and people that may have small families that could manage in 900 square feet and still manage to live here and support the community for those other people that don't have a million dollars to spend on their own home. So I'm just wondering if we need to relook at our intent there.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Christine, do you have anything you'd like to add? I know you've been dealing with ADUs a long time as well.
Oh. Thank you. And if I can address that comment with some experiences from other jurisdictions where I've worked. It may, and, and I'm not saying it has to, but it could have to do with the fact that we don't require extra parking for ADUs. And if we added more bedrooms, there could be an assumption that, that also meant more cars. And
Correct, if you have two unmarried adults or
if a family versus one person, it could, I mean, it could impact. It could have an impact that was unintended as far as creating a whole bunch more cars. Because I know that that has been an issue before in other places where I've seen ADUs that are allowed to be three-bedroom, but they had to also provide parking to alleviate the pressure for street parking. So that's
I'm sure for a reason initially, so I appreciate that knowledge.
It should have also, Mr. Mayor, if I might, I should have also mentioned that you do have block coverage standards within your ordinance as well. And so these things start to work together to just naturally limit, you know, overbuilding on the lot.
And last but not least, it's consistent with the county. Just my last one. This is the square footage that the county allows for ADUs. There's some jurisdictional precedents around.
No comment.
Was my last Mr. Mayor, that concludes our presentation. So unless there are any other questions.
Let's answer questions, council. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on these proposed code amendments?
No one online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thanks for that presentation, all. Council now consider adoption of two separate ordinances to accomplish these amendments. I will read the title of the first ordinance as follows. In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint city code title 7, chapter 3, section 9, new construction occurs, gutters and drainage. Title 11, chapter 3, stormwater management, providing for repeal and severability to providing for publication or ineffective date. Will entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and summaries approved, zero motion. So move. And move and seconded. That the ordinance passes first reading by title only and summaries approved. Is there any discussion? We roll call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only and summaries approved. Would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once an ordinance is entirely suspended. And if the ordinance passes second through reading, send your suspension of rules to the motion. So move. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted and approved suspension of rules. I will now read the title of the second ordinance as follows. In ordinance of the city of Sandpoint and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Sandpoint city code title 9, chapter 1, sections 5 and 8, accessory buildings and accessory dwelling regulations. Chapter 9, section 6B2, variance permit procedures, providing for repeal and severability and providing for publication or ineffective date. Will entertain a motion that the ordinance passes first reading by title only and summaries approved, zero motion. So move.
Second.
And move and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
The ordinance is passed its first reading by title only and the summary is approved. I would entertain a motion that the rules requiring three separate readings, once an ordinance is entirely be suspended and if the ordinance passes second through readings under suspension of rules, zero motion. So move. And move and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passed and this ordinance is considered read, passed and adopted under suspension of rules. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Any adjournments?